Okay, that shows us as getting ready to go. So, let's call the meeting to order. We stand in a so inclined face of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions, changes to the agenda?
We do have one change and I'll kind of get to it or I can explain it now. Jeff Sealy was going to be here tonight. A finance meeting went over some refunding options. Believe it or not, the election kind of changed some things. And then even recently as Thursday and Friday of last week, things have gone up. Rob, you're probably shaking your head, you know what's kind of going on in the market. We are going to have you go ahead and do the resolution tonight, just so that we can have that on hand if the numbers come back down. But as of today, it would not be wise for us to refund those bonds. So, we're going to go ahead and wait on that. No sense in being here, I can share that information with you now. We hope they come back down again in February.
Two weeks, two weeks it's changed that dramatically, hasn't it?
Yep, absolutely.
Bummer.
Yep.
So, we want to scratch Jeff off then?
Yeah.
We'll delete the scheduled presenter Sealy at this time. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
I make the motion.
Kurt, on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Rob has seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. We do our truth in taxation meeting, the first meeting of December. So, although we don't have any people of need, I guess we still, I think, should be obligated to do a quick synopsis here.
Why don't we run through really quickly? I won't go into detail, you have a copy in front of you. Later tonight, Josh will go through and do the final levy certification. So, he'll hit on some of these things again. But just so for public wants, they can always come in and review this with me. I always encourage them to bring in their tax statements. I can certainly go through every line by line with them and that often works the best. So, if anyone is watching and wants to come in and do that, they certainly can. Let's see if this will work. Get it to load. Come on, Apple TV. Do all this fancy stuff and then you gotta wait. Okay. Basically, we want to go ahead and look at kind of the big picture. And oftentimes, people ask where these things come from when we do levies or bonds and things like that. The big picture is basically that the state does all of that with us. They establish the overall tax policy for the state and they are the authority. Sometimes where people get confused is the city can often add their own levy. They can do their own things. With school districts, we need to go up to the taxpayers and have them vote for that. So, it's quite the difference from other entities. If a health institution like Mayo Clinic needs money, they can go to their shareholders. That is not the case with schools. From there, who depends on the state aid and who collects it? I thought this was an interesting graph. MREA sent this out, we had it at our last meeting. It's really interesting if you look who collects it and then who spends it. The state really has held back quite a bit of money from school districts. It's getting better and better all the time and there's some hope in this next legislative session that we'll get some of that back. This is a change in the total district operating aid and I know this is really difficult to see, but I also thought it was really interesting because you can see the levy, the revenue, and the state aid. The important line here is the red. That is the state aid. They're trying very hard to get that up and you've seen the last couple of years, given some small percentages and things like that. But we need to get that up there even higher. The green is the levies that school districts have in place.
Yep.
Oop, and go back.
Question on the numbers on this side. So, you got the negative 2,500 up to positive 15.
Yep, if you look at where we're at right now, you have, and we'll get into this, I'm going to break this down a little bit more, but you have the 724 in place and then you also have a 500.
Right.
So, that'll show us where we are in the average, but we're just a hair over that thousand mark, that 1,200 mark. So, you'll see, I've got a little bit of a breakdown in here.
Just real quick, what is the average student, what do they get in general for the average student, what are we getting a year per student?
We're at 1,200 and I've got that in here as well in the state of Minnesota, it's right around 1,300. Yep. We really, that last levy that we did really brought us kind of back into the playing field, so that's been really nice. Just kind of a recap for everyone that's in the room. 2013 was the big year they addressed. You guys voted to approve that 300. School boards got the authority to do that. It was a really important year and you took advantage of that funding mechanism and we're thankful for that. 2014 was one of the 424. The LOR is what we like to call it in the superintendent's world. That was also really, really important to be able to get that. We qualified for all of that, so again, very appreciative from the state to get that. 2015 was probably the biggest of all years. That was the year that they went ahead and allowed districts to do some long-term facility maintenance equalization. Some schools did not take advantage of this. If Dave was in the room or Josh is in the room, anyone, Jerry, you know darn well. We really took advantage of this at the exact right time. So, we've done some really good things. Hopefully, 2016 brings us again some funding that we need. At all the meetings I'm at right now, the fear is that any funding is going to go to Fix TRA. It's the Teacher Retirement Association. I'll be nervous if they do that and they count that as money towards education. That really isn't the case, but I kind of feel like that's what the talk is going to be. They're also looking at school districts getting all the way up to 9% contribution from districts. We're currently at 7.5. Teachers also would have their contribution side of things go up. If we go from 7.5 to 9, that is going to be quite the interesting budgeting for us and those of you that are on negotiations, kind of an interesting thing as far as negotiations go too. We'll find out where that all goes next. Property values, again, I'm not going to go through this slide in detail. What I prefer is people bring in your property statements. I like to go through everything so people really understand where we are. This slide just kind of shows you where all the numbers are. If you've looked at your, you know where your market value was before and where it is now. This is some trends. Rob, you definitely know what the market value trends are and where, you know, people are buying and things like that. I listed the farms, the rec and residential, commercial and industry apartments, which we've seen an actual big change in, public utilities and residential homes. Who and what impacts your tax bill? Market values of property tax classifications do the most changes. Again, depending on where you live, if you've looked at your taxes, if you own a business downtown or anything like that, you've seen those changes as well. And this slide, I did not put together, this is all from MREA. So, this one, just keep in mind, is not for Cannon Falls specific. It's overall for the state of Minnesota. So, just keep that in mind, as is the next slide. This is also the same thing. But it gives you tax rate impacts. Remember last year, and I think you heard former Senator Schmidt talk about that kind of getting to the one yard line? That is the ag to school bill will be the number one thing that they fight to do this year. They're really, really going to try to take some of that levy away from farmers. We have to do something. It's just, it's unfair to tax them on land for some of those bigger things. So, luckily, it doesn't impact referendums, but some of the bonds and things it does. The things that we need to talk about, and Josh is going to go over some things tonight, but the total tax levy is going down in 2017 by 2.6. We love anytime we could do that for our taxpayers, that's great. Affecting all levities, the property wealth per pupil decreased this year due to changes in the total valuation of things. The voter approved, we have that still in place and we will for another nine years. Other local levities obviously are the long-term facilities that you guys have done. And then I thought this was an interesting graphic and I apologize for those of you out in the audience probably can't see this at all. This goes, Kurt, the question you had asked, we're at 1,224 and there's the state average. But what's really interesting to see is all of these different counties and areas in how it impacts them as far as referendum goes. You know, we're bordering the cities, which there's some really high, you know, if you go over to Northfield, there's the max and everything all the way around us. So, it's kind of interesting that we're creeping up there to average, but yet if you go around us, we're not. The long-term facilities maintenance, I didn't put that in there. If you do have any questions on it, we can talk about it. Dave was going to talk on this slide, but we'll go ahead and pass that tonight. The main things are that it passed in 2015, we are one of the schools, the 92 schools in the state of Minnesota that did take advantage of that funding. And the other big thing is making sure we have that 10-year plan in with the state of Minnesota so we continue to receive that funding. And then just kind of summary is, you know, individual property value and classifications and a previous voter and board approved bonds. If anyone has any specific questions, I'll kind of save it for the third time tonight. Really like it when people come in so that I can go through things individually with them. So, I went through this quite quickly because there's no one here for this information and this board is really, you're really in tune with kind of what's going on, even Katie sitting back there, you'll catch on to this stuff really quickly. But if you do have any questions, I certainly can answer whatever you need. Go from there. Okay, sounds good.
Okay, moving down to reports and communication. There was a handout here for the student report. You can read that at leisure. Administrative board reports. What do we have here? Do we have any attachments from elementary or?
They are all in your computer. If you, they're lit up blue. So, my report, everyone's reports are in there. And so, if you just link on the link, there wasn't anything, we just had a board meeting, it feels like.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Committee reports. Anyone?
Yes, we did have a professional development meeting on December 5th. And let's see, they're planning for attending a workshop that's not until next August, but down in Cassin-Metterville and sending the PLC leads to that. Let's see, while they're focusing, with PLCs, they're focusing on literacy, writing, and gifted and talented program, also the daily five reading. And the PLC's process is going very well and they're including the educational assistance in that and it's working out well. Let's see, they're going to have training in January on Google Cloud, Google Drive and Google Cloud. Amy will be leading that. And what else? I think that's everything that needs to be mentioned.
Okay. Anyone else?
Meeting on the tech meeting. I got there just a little bit late, but they're talking some about, oh, some of the apps that are out there and how they're going to work with different applications. One was in particular, it's kind of interesting, was there's an app out there for if, and I don't know if it's an option, but if you're a teacher and you can see what's other kids are doing on their devices and there's an app out there, if you can see where they're at, they're in the class and they can see they're not doing their homework, they can shut their device down.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that's an option, but there's also some discussion about Wi-Fi. Do we have the, are we good to go with Wi-Fi? Do we have the strength that we need so everyone can be on? It's in discussion right now. There's some sort of funding out there that if they do it now, that it might be an option to look into it and I think there's going to be some further discussion on that.
They're really giving a lot of additional money to what's called E-rate. When you go to your WeTech meeting, he'll be discussing it. I have that meeting tomorrow. You know, right now, currently, we're okay. Our Wi-Fi strike is, it's good, but when you start bringing in things like, instead of, you know, replacing these things with smart boards, you're doing Apple TV and the connectivity there, but we will want to take advantage of that if that money really does come through. I'm not going to hold my breath. I know they're pretty excited about it. It'd be nice if that, if there's funding there, that'd be great. So, you want to stay ahead of that. You don't want to, where we're kind of fixing it or catching up, so.
Right.
That'd be some good discussion for Thursday.
Yeah, I think you'll learn a lot on Thursday at your board meeting.
Because we just put, wasn't that 125 into it when we initially, three years ago?
That was rewiring and a lot of different things, more of the points sometimes like that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't make that meeting.
We had a facility meeting last Friday and it was pretty laid back. It was a group, including Beth and Jake and Dave Davison.
Peterson.
Peterson. Dave Davison wasn't there. Several others, Amy was there as well. And looking at the coordination of that facility relative to other facility, other areas. Dave is our head maintenance man, but does that, does that mean that he should be coordinating activities, purchases, that type of thing? I think sometimes we may fall down at that facility. Jerry, you can throw in it whenever.
We're talking, he's talking about the auditorium.
You didn't notice, you were saving.
Yeah, really?
That's good to know.
I thought of this, I looked at you and you're like, where are we going here? Auditorium issues, just trying to. Just trying to coordinate who does what and when.
But we had conversations a year, a couple of years ago about this, you know, once you're in the wall, who owns what's in the wall, what's outside the wall, who owns that?
Yep.
Who owns the upkeep on it, which budget does it come out of? Yeah, that's been a discussion for a while, hasn't it?
Dave, I and Rob had that conversation shortly after Dave got here.
Yeah.
So, I think it's an extension of that and it's no timetable except research. We have a couple of people that volunteer quite a bit of time there and I think sometimes they should be in the loop as far as what goes on there. They've been invaluable helping us out. Now, we've got Emery as well and just the coordination of everything. Emery needs a couple of new lights. Where does he go to order those? Does he go through Dave? Does he go through, you know, community ed? Just simple things like that that I don't think anybody has been talking about. Well, it was apparent three years ago he talked about it.
No final discussion, but yeah, a lot of it. There was the, I think it was more of a question session of how do you determine how you organize? And it really is based, I think, more on budget than anything. And then if anything, responsibility, once, if something's done, who's now is responsible for maintenance or which budget does it come out of? Especially where we're doing the wiring for the Wi-Fi.
I think things along that line were discussed.
And I think part of it was picked up when Tom did a lot of the controlling in the sound. I think he took care of some of that stuff himself. Not sure where the monies all came from. So, I think after we had that short conversation, when Tom was down there, just kind of was done. I don't know if he did it or who did it. But with new person, now what's, where's our direction at? Who's got that direction? Or who gives that direction?
Well, I think that one of the bigger hurdles was when community rents or doesn't rent, I mean, they get it for free because they're nonprofit. And what does that mean? What does that look like? Does that mean they just get the facility and then, you know, does Shepherd Center bring in their own equipment or do they not? Do we, you know? So, there's, I think there's been some good conversation started and it sounds like, you know, we'll be following up with another facility meeting from there, so.
There wasn't a discussion earlier this year regarding the control panels and training or at least something that someone could come in who wasn't a regular in the audience?
Yeah, we've got that. So, yeah, Emery's doing a great job with that stuff. It's the bigger productions that we're still kind of struggling with.
And, yeah, like Beth said, if a nonprofit group comes in, does it behoove the school district to eat any of the costs involved with them promoting a project? Or should we be giving them at least a little baseline fee so we don't spend our money? So, I think that'll come up with time. Jake has been talking about at least bringing, bringing forward that conversation about how we charge people and what premise we charge people. So, more just conversation with the facility committee. You'll hear more.
GCED also met that board on December 1st. It was a pretty routine meeting. We have the GCED audit report from Steve Salwes and Smith Schaker and everything looks good there. And then they have approved all of their staff agreements, employment contracts with the par professionals, with the director and the executive directors, or the director of systems development, and they have approved those. That was about really, about really all that happened at the end of the year meeting. Next meeting is January 26th.
Okay. Public input. If anyone has any wishes to speak for any cause related to the school district, now is your time. And that time is over. We'll move forward to consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
Yeah. So, apologize for the voice, but this is about 100% better than it was three weeks ago. I used to have a little bit of voice now. So, in the financial report, you'll see, again, pretty light on this. And as I've announced for my surgery, I had a couple of complications along with it. Come back to finish up audit. So, you'll see the audit presentation will be at the January meeting. Everything is in with the state per deadlines and compliance, but the audit presentation itself will be at the January meeting, as it's all cleaned and wrapped up. Felt it was better not to try to push it and have it at this meeting and possibly have a couple of errors or misrepresentations, but to have it right. So, as far as the state concerned, we're having turned in, I was just putting all the reports together. So, that presentation will be at the January business for the, so you'll see the financial report is just the cash flow worksheet. And as you look at the top, the balances will be the check-in account and then the two bonds for the building. Important to note with the bonds for the building, there'll be a withdrawal of funds from that to help cover some of these costs we've already put out for our vendors, which I'm going to be approving and going to choose tonight. So, we're kind of left with mainly in those balances are going to be the 10% retention as it gets commissioned and finalized. Most of the work is done, not completely all the way to 90%, but once it gets cleaned up, then you'll see this balance kind of go up to zero within the next, like, three to four months as things get wrapped up. So, really, the other big want to note in the cash flow would be in the middle there at January 20th, where you see the debt service payments. Those are all our current outstanding bonds except for the 2015 A. That's on a slightly different schedule, that's paid in December, whereas these other ones are paid in January. We've already submitted the payment for the 2015 A. You'll see cash dips quite a bit there, but still, based on ideas funds and cash on hand, we're in position not to do any anticipation borrowing and that's a good thing for us again this year. So, again, like I said, apologize for being pretty light on the finance side this month, but if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Questions for anyone? From anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Move to the page. Consent agenda items. Items normally under the consent agenda are considered routine and will enact them in one motion. If by any chance, a board member wants to discuss these items singularly, we can remove that and deal with it in a separate action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. No old business, new business, consideration to approve a head girl softball coach. Jake?
Very excited to announce that Tom Langfeld has accepted the head girl softball coach. Many of you probably know Tom. He's been teaching here for a long time. He's been the head coach at Faribault BA actually for the last six years. He's going to stay here and take over our program this year. He was an assistant a handful of years ago and then took some time off, then took the BA job. He's also coached football at BA and he's been a longtime assistant basketball coach at St. Olaf as well too. Very happy, very happy with our candidates and, yeah, Mr. Langfeld's working up on the staff together and it's looking good.
Good to hear.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a new pay scale for the teachers on call starting with the 1718 school year.
We are kind of a unique district that we used to have a sliding scale of sorts. You know, you can see down at the bottom, if you're a full day from one to five years, you get $100 or, you know, full day, but you've been a teacher for 11 years. This gets quite complicated because someone could come to us as a retired Red Wing teacher and say, well, I was a teacher for 30 some years. So, in the old contract, they would jump all the way to the bottom because they have 11 plus years of teaching, which is rightfully so. We like teachers that have been teachers for a long time. But what it was kind of doing is, you know, the teachers, the $140 amount was always kind of for the retired teachers. Now, I'll go back and say that as far as the HBL goes, we are at the very high end of substitute teachers. We do have difficulty finding subs because of our location. The difference with us and the HBLs, we are the most northern part and we compete with the metro. So, when Mr. Britnall reached out to me about a couple of things with some subs and things like that, we discussed it and I investigated a little bit further because I'd always looked at just the HBL rates and was very confident saying we're one of the highest. TOC had told us we're one of the highest. But when I started looking at it from the metro standpoint, we weren't. And so, what I'd like to do is do two things. I'd like to simplify our scale. I'd like to do, if you're here for the first 29 days, you get $120. If you're anything over the 30 days, and what this does is it gets repeat people, they'll come back because they want that higher amount and they want to be here. And then if you do a full day and you're retired from Cannon Falls, you would get $140. Again, I'll give you Byron, for example, they're $100 a day, flat rate. Zabrodoma's up as 115, flat rate. So, if you don't like this scale, we can certainly change it, but this would be my recommendation to you to simplify things for budgeting purposes, all of that. It just really makes everything a little bit easier. I did run this by our two EA presidents. They agreed, they also liked it as well.
Did you run the numbers just, and I know two years are the same, but?
I did, I did just, I did a general, like, we know how many subs we roughly have a year. By the time you take out the low ones and take away the people that would be at the 11, you know, there was a cost difference of roughly $1,700. And this would be more expensive to go roughly $1,700. But I want quality subs in Cannon Falls. It's a big deal to have someone really good in the room. And so, if we use last year's number, that's roughly where we'd be.
So, you're talking one in 29 days, you're talking subbing in our district?
Yep. So, if they come here, on the 28th day, they make 120, but when they get to that 31st day and they're committed to Cannon Falls, then they would bump over to that $130.
Yep. And I would absolutely, if we can bring back retired teacher for $140 a day, that's a, in my opinion, it's a benefit to our district.
Sure.
They know where everything is, they know the games, they know.
They know where the copier is. They, you know, there's just so much.
No handholding, they've been there, done that. They know most of the kids.
Yeah, the other thing we could do is if you want to change it to all retired teachers, if that makes you feel a little bit better. It's just the old way, it was 11 plus years of teaching. Well, it doesn't take too long and you're 11 plus years of teaching and you were kind of jumping ahead of retirees, so it felt kind of backwards.
What percentages are retired teachers from Cannon Falls? Is that designated by the district or is that by the teachers on call?
Teachers on Call hires all of our subs. We have a lot of retired teachers that go through Teachers on Call to do subbing. I guess I'd have to dig up the numbers for you. I don't know what the percentage is, but they're here a lot. If you look at some of our regulars, they're here almost every day.
Retired, retired teachers.
So, there's a, there's a board that they look at every day and they see all the openings for the day and they just plug in where they want to go?
They, it's all computerized, so if a teacher gets ill at 2:00 in the morning and they have a favorite, they can, they can plug in who they want. There are some teachers that only check the boxes of retired teachers because they like those people being in their rooms. You know, I like familiar faces, so it helps me too.
We're 100% of teachers on call, we're not doing our own.
That's correct.
Okay.
By contract, if a teacher's going to be gone for 30 days or more and we know that ahead of time, maternity leave or a surgery or anything like that, we have to post it and they get put on the contract. When that happens, it's roughly $170 a day. So, if we know someone's going to go surgery, we have to put them on as a first-year teacher. So, not much of a choice there.
So, what's, what's the difference between hiring our own in-house and going to teachers on call?
Oh, I can't even, I can't even explain it. It's just so easy because everything is there. is there. You'd have to hire someone, you know, they do charge 25%, but they pay the FICA, they pay the TRA, they pay the workman's comp if the teacher was default or anything. I can't pay for it at that rate. I don't even know how they do it. I would anticipate their new contract is going to go up a little bit. But right now, I couldn't even hire a secretary for $5,000 a year to run all of that. You know, there's just no way you could do that. And someone that's willing to come in at 5:00 AM to make sure the subs are in line for the day.
I remember when we switched over, Lori was handling that and this was a big piece of it.
Terry Soul was our biggest one and it was really hard. We either had to give her comp time or, yeah, this has been just kind of a, and we still have trouble sometimes finding subs. I mean, there's definitely a shortage out there, but TOC takes that on themselves. So that's...
Really, there's only $10 or $15 a difference between us doing it, somebody else is doing all the legwork for us and we don't have to, like you say...
So what would happen if they, if their rates go up? How would that affect the rate we pay teachers?
Well, this is what we pay the teacher, then add on 25% is what the total cost from TOC would be.
Does that be on top of this?
Correct. Yep.
Are you asking if TOC would go to 30% for example, or...
Well, no, you said their...
They could. You know, we're, we're in contract for another year, so we're okay for a while. But you know, the next contract, they're going to have to look at the teaching shortage and, you know, say, where are they from? What are they doing to recruit new teachers? Things like that, so. I did up the par rate just a little bit too. I like to have, again, it's just that common face, especially with some of our special needs kids. It's nice to have people with a little bit of background with special needs, so.
That's the same way that we hire pairs, is TOC?
That's correct. We do teachers and pairs.
Yeah. As you see, they were also looking to increase their rates because they were having urgent filling some of their subs spots because they're, they're all special ed and those are harder to fill.
And we can designate the rate of pay based upon whether or not someone was a retired teacher or not. That's legal.
We tell TOC what we want to pay them.
Really?
If a teacher wants it, they're supposed to take it. If they don't, pay double rate.
Yeah, they don't care. I mean, they get their rate no matter if you charge $90 a day or $140 a day. They don't, it's the same for them.
It's just the procedure of what we're paying now.
Yep.
We certainly have lost teachers through the years to northern districts because we're so close. It kind of makes sense that we would increase this to stay competitive with that teacher who's on the southern metro area maybe.
What's your pleasure on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda has made a motion to approve the new pay scale.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the resolution providing for the sale of general obligation school funding refunding bonds and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use provisions of the state statutes to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds.
Basically, what I'm hopeful here is if we have this resolution in place and bonds were to go to a really good rate again, Jeff would immediately give me a call and I'd be able to act on that because the resolution is in place. None of us are seeing that huge drop coming anytime soon, but you know, the market right now is, is kind of all over the place. So our goal is to have this resolution in place. I would obviously send out an email to you if I was to act on it in any way, but the only way I would act on it is if we had a savings. You're certainly not going to do some bonds if there's an increase. So this is just a security measure for you so that we didn't have to wait two weeks for the next board meeting.
Is there going to be a timeline on it or are we just going to leave it open-ended?
Well, this will be open until June because there's a certain time where it doesn't make sense to do it again anyway because they'll be reevaluated. And Josh is a big part of that too. So Jeff, Josh and I are kind of always, he's always sending emails. They, they review, did you say every other week? They go through everything?
Yeah. You know, a big review probably happens quarterly, but they're always looking at rates and seeing what...
Absolutely. I would say about every other week I get an email. We feel really confident doing this. If you, if you don't want to sign it, that's fine too. It just, it's just something to have in place. We may or may not use it.
Rob?
I'm just wondering, this is almost redundant. I like the idea. Do we need to put any provisions on the motion from the board level for direction?
Sure.
Just a thought. I don't know if there's something that we want to look at as far as savings. We know there would be one, but at what point do we say, yep, or do we say, yep, go ahead no matter what. When you feel right, just pull the trigger?
A little or something.
Yeah. You know, it's kind of like, probably you guys with Ross, I don't know what you guys decided there, but to give you...
You could say based off your financial advice, just so that it's not just the superintendent or the business manager making that decision. You could say based off of recommendation from our financial advisors. That might be a really wise thing to add. Be okay with that. We take their recommendation anyway, but if you put it in the motion, that might kind of, you know, it's not Josh or I making that decision then.
But we don't trust you.
No, I don't feel that way at all. This is, it's a, it's a big deal, you know.
What's the cost to do something like that?
Well, the savings, you know, even three months ago was close to $100,000. What, 120 when we had our last facility meeting, wasn't it? About 120?
Compared to the savings, right?
Yep. And there were three different options. I mean, we narrowed it down to about two that we were really looking at. But even within the next two days after that meeting, before I could even present to you at the last board meeting, they had already jumped so high.
But to restructure that, there must be a cost.
There is. And you want that, that cost margin to be at least $50,000 savings. Otherwise, it really is just not worth doing it, so.
Are you talking about like the cost basically for a refi, actual...
Right. So then at what point, like I said, is the high-low, where is it most feasible? And there must be a line drawn there where it's like, okay...
There'd be something similar to if you were to refinance your house, the closing costs associated with that.
But I think you're saying there's got to be a net of $50,000.
There has to be or it's just not enough doing it. Because there's other, you know, you've got CELEI involved. I mean, you've got other things involved.
Be a lot of work to do just for a wash. You'd want to make sure you save either time or money.
At least $100,000.
And that's something that, would we allow to the people involved, CELEI, or is that something that would be up to you guys here?
I would, I would have them send that out. And I, I certainly can communicate to you via email, but you can't respond. So it's one of those things where information can be given to you, but, but you know, this is just one of those things you only do if there's a huge savings, so.
So are we making a motion on the resolution or a motion on the authority? Or are there going to be two?
I think we're making a motion on the resolution, but you can absolutely add that caveat that you threw in there to continue that resolution, right?
That is correct.
So I don't know how we word it though.
Based upon...
You're going to have to read it.
We just wanted to say as recommended by our financial consultants.
Just add that at the end.
Yeah.
Add it at the end.
Say that again. I'm good with it. Let's say it again.
As recommended by our financial consultants. Are in accordance with the recommendations of our financial...
And then I'm going to put commas.
Is that some better? In accordance with, you like that?
Yeah.
It looks really good right here.
I'll make a motion for that.
Rob's making a motion for the resolution and, and as recommended by our financial consultant.
I'll second.
Rob on the motion, Kurt on the second.
And this is, I guess to make sure we're clear that it gives the superintendent the authority solely by herself to move forward with the advice from our financial consultant to refi.
And just so you know, that takes three signatures. So even that step can't happen without Josh, I, and your clerk as well.
Okay. Further discussion? Would you like to read that to us?
Do we vote on the motion?
We should do a vote on the motion and then do a roll call from you. You've got the motion and a second?
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. And so...
Can we never read the resolution?
Yeah, we read the resolution.
Do we vote on the motion or no?
I have a second.
We have to read the resolution. Okay, roll call, vote here. On the resolution, providing for the sale of general obligation school building refunding bonds, series 2017A, and covenanting and obligating the district to be bound by and to use the provisions of the Minnesota statutes, section 1, 26C.55, to guarantee the payment of principal and interest on these bonds in accordance with the recommendations of our financial consultants. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Rob?
Yes.
Okay. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the final levy certification payable fiscal year '17.
So you have the levy certification that's validated right now. If you were to certify today, I'll go in and certify quick so that Brenda could sign before...
Oh, that'd be great.
We need to get that, um, to staple. Beth's already gone through most of the details of the levy certification through the, through some taxation. The big part to remember here is that you'd be certifying the maximum. We do that in case there are any, either adjusting or recalculating errors or adjustments that need to be made prior to the state finalizing the levy. And we're not held at a lower levy amount than what we were required to do. So we'll certify at the max. As Beth said, our overall levy will decrease about 2.6% of that. The largest portion is in the general fund, about 3% reduction. A large part of that is certainly enrollment, but also with the long-term facility maintenance bonds. A lot of that funding that goes down to the debt service account. So there's some movement within there. As well, there's a reduction in the debt service. And you would think how that kind of counterintuitive, but we have a bit of a debt excess. And when you get to a certain point of having too much in your debt service fund, the state automatically will reduce that for you. They collect at a rate of 105%. Kind of allowing for some of either delinquent accounts or non-payment of taxes. We're fortunate to be in a economy where we do receive a large portion of, the majority of our tax collection. So we have an excess of debt. At some times, we're able to manually reduce that. This time, the state will do that for us regardless. We have enough in our debt service fund to pay for our obligations for our bonds that we have outstanding. So in terms of taxpayer news, good news in reducing the tax levy, about 3% for the general fund, 2.6% overall. And again, the recommendation from us would be to certify that at the maximum. Any questions I can answer?
So what you're saying is because everybody paid, we're actually...
The excess. Yep.
Where they collected. I'll make a motion to certify that at the maximum on the final levy certification.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution directing admin to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore.
This is standard. You do this every December. Very fortunate that it isn't one of those years that we know we're going to make big reductions. But it is always important to have administrations sit down and make sure that everything is right-sized. If you have an incoming kindergarten and an outgoing senior class, you have to make sure that all those things happen. We will go ahead the first week of February and do registration. We'll see how many ITV classes come in, how many online classes come in, and then we will make staffing recommendations accordingly. I don't anticipate large reductions of any kind, but I do need to look at incoming kindergarten and exiting seniors. So it's just important that we do this. It doesn't mean anything. I don't want anyone home alarmed that we're making reductions, but it is giving you the right, and you're telling administration to go ahead and do that process.
Okay. We need a motion to approve.
Is that, is that a resolution?
It is a resolution.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion second. First, Jerry, did you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Rob is second. Okay, Brenda, last page.
I'm sure that be resolved. Be resolved as School Board of Independent Schools District Number 252 as follows, that the School Board hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effect trade economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and, as a result of a reduction in enrollment, make recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or curtailment of positions. Okay, roll call, vote, Rob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
I think that passes by a 5-0 vote. Last item, consideration to approve a fundraising effort for the Costa Rica trip.
Just remember that every time they bring a fundraiser list to at the beginning of the year, these are ones that we don't know about, which means we have to bring them to you. We encourage any of these organizations to go outside of Cannon Falls because we're trying to limit how much we're hitting people in Cannon Falls. This is a really neat opportunity. Kids get to clean tables and, and work for culprits and in turn, they get a donation back to them. So it's a really kind of a win-win. Kids get some work if they normally don't do this kind of thing. You can read the details there, but I would recommend that we approve this one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What is the group?
The kids. Good question. I should probably say that. Spanish takes a trip every other year. You're aware of that. This is the year that they take the Spanish trip. Students pay for that themselves. Parents, you know, it's a, it's raised, but we try to help them kind of like we did with We the People. There's a cost for parents, but we're trying to help them out a little bit. This is the year that they go to Costa Rica. So kids that are in Spanish can participate in this trip. So thanks for clarifying that, Bob. I'll make the motion to group.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion?
So, and I'm just, because we've gotten a few lately, I know some of them were unknown at the time. Isn't this something that they would normally plan for? Is this something that they just needed to do on top of?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's on top of. I think the cost of the trip is kind of getting up there, so they're looking for some avenues. They've also had a lot of parent meetings and of course, there's parents that are like, oh, I know we can do this. And so I think Ms. Mercer's trying to kind of appease on the parents to help the parents bring the cost down. We've really encouraged them to not do anything more in Cannon Falls. And so this is, like I said, kind of a win-win for everybody.
Okay. We get a motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. All in favor of the fundraising? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried 5-0. Okay. Information items for our next meeting, January 9th at 6:00 PM. That's our organizational meeting, our once a year. And a number of things, procedural things take place then.
Can I do one thing from Lori? She will kill me if I don't say this. You have the copy of my evaluation process, the timeline in front of you. The meeting where we go in and we talk about my evaluation and then the following meeting is when we do the summary is when I am at my national certification class again. So we had to move that to March. So she highlighted everything she wants you to really pay close attention to. So the February things have been moved back to March because those items need to be back-to-back. You can't have a break between meetings. Does that make sense to you? So the only thing that were changed is the March 13th and the March 27th, we were in February. So it kind of gives you another month to get my evaluation things done. But you'll see at the next meeting in January, you've got a couple of things you need to do. The first item is for me. I have to present to you where I'm at on my goals that you gave me at the beginning of the year. And then the second January meeting is I'll make a mid-year progress report to the School Board, giving you, again, kind of where I am on my goals and what we have left to finish for the year. So Lori just really wanted you to understand that change. She's really kind of serious about this business, so.
This is about as close as you've ever gotten.
Yeah. I know. We're doing really well.
So you've been up for...
On the timeline. Right, I know. She was just really, made me promise that I would mention it, so.
Okay. Anyone else has anything for the cause, please refer to Beth or Lori. And I'd be looking for a motion to...
Just before, we'll still get out in time.
Yeah, oh, gosh.
I just got a, just a, just a, I wouldn't say a concern, but when, just at the last curriculum committee meeting, we're talking and, you know, we're coming through with the new one-on-one devices and now we're kind of in full play with it. And what's, what's going to happen, I think, from what we see is there's going to be new programs coming up. There's going to be new things that we're going to need. And maybe, and it's not just for that, it's for, for everything, you know? What do we do with the fields? What do we do for maintenance and upkeep? But are we looking at something where we, we challenge staff to say, what are we going to need three years from now and five years from now? Instead of, you know, just for instance, if, with Wi-Fi, it's like, oh, we need to update our Wi-Fi. And, you know, it could potentially be $100,000. It's like, oh, that's kind of an unforeseen cost that was never really budgeted. And I'm not, it's just, it comes up. But is the challenge is can we look ahead now and say, where are we going to be?
I love that you're asking this question.
Yeah. Where are we going to be three years from now? So we can, we don't have to be, you know, it's easy to spend more of the money now that we have it, but can we be a little bit, I shouldn't say, can we look into the future?
I've given them, in the last tech meeting, Amy didn't get into that because we're kind of in an odd place with it right now. But just like facilities, you've got a five-year plan. And three years of that is solid. And I told you that repeatedly when it was up on the screen. These three years are for sure. The last two are kind of projection models of sorts. Amy has what I have for the next three years. She doesn't like that. She knows that there's more things to do in there. But until I get that back from her, we're not changing that. But until I get that back from her, we're not changing that. Um, what I can do is go ahead and just like I did with facilities and, and I know Rob, we've talked about doing that, too, having that five-year plan. Uh, the big one that you saw with transportation, I think is another example of what exactly are we going to spend? You saw exactly where we're buying a van in every one of those years or a bus. So we've got it done with facilities and we've got it done with transportation, you saw both those presentations. Next up is, is technology. Right now, they're trying to decide what they want to do with teacher devices because that lease is up. So, Josh, I mean, we've gotten those models and we've got that ready to go. I'm just not ready to present it to you yet because we can't agree on what those numbers should be.
So, for instance, when we've been toying with up, you know, and doing the, the tennis courts, and that's kind of been sitting back on the burner, and yet at what point do we say, hey, look, this will be in the budget for this year, so it's taken care of? You know, instead of pushing it back, it's like, no, it's in the budget for this.
You've got that, you, we have that built into the, the ten-year facility plan, all of that's in there.
Into a ten-year, okay, so, but do we, if that's the case, when does that get addressed? I mean, somewhere's in the ten years, or we say, look, next year, this will be taken care of.
Tennis courts are up next year, that's what we're built in. In your ten-year plan, I put it in for two, well, 2017, 18, that'd be next year already.
So it's in there then?
The iffy part on that was the sale of Wastido was really hinged on that, I plugged that in as a sale.
But that shouldn't drive it, that's what I'm saying.
It doesn't drive it, but it does kind of...
What's driving is we, we make a budget and we stick to a budget. I mean, it's a moving number, but I, I don't want to say, look, we're going to sell Wastido, so now we have funds to do this.
What you're saying is we want to dip into that general fund for those types of things.
Um, if we have to, yes, but I, I just, if it's in the budget, then let's look at that budget and see if that's what we go forward with, you know?
Do you think I need to bring that back? Because you, you've seen the, the facility and you've seen the transportation.
Yeah.
You're, you're still waiting on the, the technology.
No, this is just, I'm not, I don't want to bring up to vote, that's just me, I, this is just for everybody. It's like, let's, let's have a budget for it and if it's on the budget, let's do that. Not be circumstantial to something else that might come up.
I agree.
But it's there and we have to go forward and, it's a moving number, but...
It's a commitment you're looking for.
Yeah, rather than, you know, it's, if it's there, unless it's absolutely necessary to change it for some reason, but then it, then it gets done.
This is the message that Josh and I repeatedly tell Amy. We can't, this is what we've built in for a budget. If you need something else, I need justification, it's got to run through the tech committee. There's a million steps it needs to do to change that budget at all.
I just think what's going to happen, we're going to have wants and needs and...
We better start bringing them forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, um, and the wifi may absolutely be necessary. Um, but is it going to be a want versus a need or do we budget that out for within the next year or two or something like that? You know what I'm saying, so.
They do need to bring those things forward. And Aaron promises me that he's getting those numbers together, so I don't have that yet. Um, but until I see what a E-rate does and what, when you say improve a wifi, what's that mean? What's that number? It's impossible for me to bring you a three-year to a five-year reduction when I don't even know what that costs. Um, I don't know what it takes to outfit eighty-two teachers with new devices. What does that mean? What's that number look like? So until they answer my questions, I can't build that budget yet.
There's some that say three years is, is too much time for technology, too. And I, you know, I, that's tough.
It is for technology, but pricing, as we've seen, our, our devices are getting cheaper as we've moved forward.
Yeah.
So budgeting, I think, is a different animal than the actual technology we're getting.
And yes, it's outdated when we get it, but our budgeting actually might be a little bit aggressive because it's higher.
But hopefully, things will get cheaper, not wifi and, you know, fiber optics, but maybe the devices and everything.
I'm going to add it on here just so you can see a prelim three-year budget for technology. Um, that can't hurt, and Josh, we've already got the last three years that we could build off of, so.
Yeah, you could just see the last three years, too, because it's kind of lost focus on, I mean, it was kind of a...
Well, we've got all the leases, just like technology, I mean, it looks identical to the technology, or to the transportation when we're, you can see a lease from five years ago on that bus because we're still paying on it, here's the last year. So I'll, I'll, we'll put it together identical to that one because it was really easy to understand and you can kind of see where we're going. And that way, we have a prelim, it won't be final because they have to wait for Aaron on that, but we'll get it.
Do you have the budget versus the actual for the last three years going backwards?
Josh would have all of that, yeah.
That'd be good, if we could do a comparison, too. I, and just to see, um, because I know when we're doing the budgeting process, I think we would start, because you always budget well before you buy. And when you budget and then you bought, it was, I think it was quite a good, a good significant difference, it'd be interesting.
You had a, a look in your face when she was talking, confused look or questioning look?
I don't remember the facility ten-year coming out, I thought that you guys last year, I know we have a ten-year facility plan, but I thought there was, right, but I thought there was another document that you guys were working on that was going to be like a five-year projects list of tennis courts, CCC, just different things that, a priority list of expenditures.
I think Dave was, Dave was looking at that, we talked about it in the summertime and, uh, you know, his, his visions for the backyard, I think, kind of precipitated all of that.
Parking lot, all of it, so has, that's not a part of the ten-year budget?
It's not, but if he wants any of those things come up, you'd have to, it's already built out three years. We already know what we're spending on facilities for the next three years, especially with all the long-term maintenance plan that you just did. So, if he wants any of that changed, that has not been brought to our attention.
That has not brought, been brought up to us either yet.
Right, so the parking lot, for example, is nowhere on the radar at this point. Okay, so, does that, a little bit more detail, because I think that what you're looking at, Kurt, is probably a little bit more detail in the tech.
Yeah.
Would that make sense with the, with the facilities? Because we know there are some things that are going to have to be redone. The buildings themselves are secured now, I think, but...
Sure.
Once you get outside these walls, now we're into a whole different world, those parking lots and lighting and backyard and...
Right.
Yeah, because I thought that you get, yeah, I thought Vans or Facilities was working on that little thing, too.
And the other thing that I altered in there, you know, we now have preventative maintenance that, um, they've encouraged me to build in and those parts are ten thousand dollars. So, um, facilities budgeting has gone up by fifty thousand dollars for the next five years, each year. Um, so, but, you know, especially the technology one, you have not seen anything on that. So that'll be, that'll be really good to kind of push them along because you asked for it.
Right, well, and again, to the interesting question, again, you know, I know we're just talking about the auditorium, but who owns what part of the building? wires in the walls, or is that technology or is that facilities?
Yeah, I feel like we have that, I wish both of them were here, I, they would say, I think we've got that pretty well figured out. That has gotten a lot easier.
It's certainly going to be a challenge, I mean, it's hard to predict what's up there, but, for the future.
Yep.
It's a good direction.
It is, but if you still build in a number, Kurt, what's nice about that is, okay, this is what we built in. Do what you can within the parameters, you know?
You know what can happen, after the else is a maybe.
Got to figure out what the wants are versus the needs.
Make a question, too.
Brenda, good job.
I can't be really talking to them.
You made a motion to adjourn, Jerry has seconded that. Other discussion. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.